It's a really long minute when you're like actually watching.
When you're watching.
Let's move in for a minute. All right, it is Tuesday, July 5th at 1:00 PM. This is time for a regularly scheduled commission meeting. Ma'am Clerk, do we have a call?
Yes, Mayor.
All right, I believe it is Commissioner Euler's turn to lead the pledge of invitation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow with me. Heavenly Father, we ask you to bless our time together today. Help us make wise decisions to bless Garden City and those who live here. Thank you to our first responders who went above and beyond the last two weeks, working overtime and doing extra patrols so we could be safe for our Fourth of July celebrations. Father, we are grateful for all the blessings you give to us. Fill us with your grace as we pray in your name. Amen.
Okay. Item four is approval of the minutes from the last meeting. Was there any changes to the commission minutes the last time? And those will stand as approved. Next, we have public comment. This is time for anybody from the community to come up and discuss issues of the city. We have 30 minutes allocated. Please limit yourself to five minutes per person. And when you do come up, state your name and who you're from if you're with an organization. So I do see we have Lucille Douglas as the first person. So you can kick us off, I guess.
I'm Lucy Douglas. I'm here on behalf of some of the residents of the mayor's circle. I'm an attorney and a friend of mine brought a ticket to me for peacocks. I wasn't aware that we had peacocks in Garden City, but then I found out that actually because of the drainage ditch, there are peacocks and guineas and other birds that escape from farms or reproduce out on the prairie. I didn't know peacocks were in the same family as pheasants, but they are. So I learned a lot about peacocks over the last little bit. But the interesting thing when I got the ticket was I looked at the way it was charged. And it's charged as being in violation of the fowl regulations, but those relate to domestic birds which are owned and compliant and kept for agricultural purposes or whatever they live within the city. But then the language that was used by the officers was harboring. So the story of the peacocks is that they came through about three years ago down the drainage ditch. One of them came first and found a mayor's circle and decided that it was a beautiful neighborhood and that that's where it wanted to reside. And so they took up residence in the trees and kind of bounced from yard to yard. And some of the neighbors became fairly invested in this peacock and fed it and took care of it and found ways to mitigate the danger of property damage. They put up mirrors so the peacocks had something shiny to pick at. The peacocks kind of eventually habituated mainly to the yard of Ross and Marilyn Porter. But migrate throughout the whole neighborhood. The peacocks have caused some noise complaints in the neighborhood and the neighbors had caught all except the original. There was a male that showed up first and then a female came down the drainage ditch. There have been some others that have shown up and decided not my neighborhood and moved on. But two of them stayed and there were a couple fledglanes or three fledglanes, I think, that stayed in the neighborhood across Maryland and tried to collect any eggs that they find and prevent any explosion of population. But there were three hatchlings at some point. So those have been removed from the neighborhood and now it's just the male and the female. The concern is the way the statutes are current or the ordinances are currently written, there really isn't anything that addresses these feral birds that just sort of show up and decide that they like Garden City and they want to live here. For native birds that show up, they're protected. They're just part of the community. But for these feral exotic birds that show up, they're not really covered under the fowl ordinance because they're not property and they're not owned by anyone. They don't really follow the cat and dog ordinances prohibiting harboring feral animals because those are specific to cats and dogs. So there really isn't a way to address these kind of feral birds that just sort of show up. And if you look on Facebook, you're seeing more and more. You know, there's a guinea that showed up in my neighborhood or there's a feral peacock over by the hospital or on Eighth Street or wherever. And some of them are going to stay if they find a place where they're comfortable and happy. The question is, do we have a way to address it? So on the one hand, I have a client who has been served with multiple citations because of her care for these birds that frequent her backyard and she feeds and provides shelter for. I'm sorry, I kind of lost my train of thought there. So we have somebody who's now been taken in multiple times. And we have to have a way to address this. So we've kind of visited with the city a little bit and were asked to put together a proposed ordinance, which I did. I tried very hard to be fair. I tried to address issues of aggression where other cities, I've done some research where other cities have had problems is they either say, okay, we're going to protect these peacocks or other exotic birds because they're beautiful and we have people that love them and they have blocks that become unmanageable. Well, that's not good because then they start damaging property and they get aggressive and there are problems. So we don't want that happening in Garden City because that's a big problem in and of itself. We don't want so many that we have noise problems as the one that was just mitigated earlier this summer. And if the city decides that we simply don't want these birds, regardless of whether people in the neighborhood find them and enhance them, that decision needs to be made too. But there needs to be some ordinance or some resolution that we're functioning under. So we'd like the city to consider an ordinance that recognizes that these types of birds as protected if they're within a neighborhood and they have designated caretakers and steps are being taken to mitigate property damage, nuisances, noise complaints, things like that. If there are people willing to accept responsibility for researching, finding out what needs to be done to keep them healthy and to have them cohabitate in harmony with the other residents of the community. We don't want neighbors to, we don't want to impact other people's enjoyment of their neighborhood. But for the people in a mayor's circle, these peacocks, and not everybody, there are people in a mayor's circle that don't like the peacocks. But for the majority of the people in the circle, they're a source of beauty. They were a source of hope and inspiration when they were all locked down during COVID. People on tally trail like to stop and look at them. There's, I think you were provided with a petition or a letter of support that had multiple signatures on it for people in the neighborhood and outside the neighborhood. So we really would like the city to consider if this is an alternative that allows the enjoyment of this beautiful enhancement to the community, whether this is something that just needs to be prohibited outright or what. And we do think that this is an opportunity to reach a compromise that meets all of those concerns.
Thank you. I think that's good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody, anybody else who wants to, while we're on the topic of peacocks? Okay. I don't want to, I don't want to switch topics and then come back and give you a chance.
My name's Marilyn Porter and I live at 18 Tannamere Circle. And the male and female peacock that originally showed up are still in the area and a lot of the residents very much enjoy them. I am probably the one in front of you today just simply because we're the only ones in the neighborhood that feed birds. And that's what I believe honestly brought him to our house in the first place. I had video the first morning he showed up and he actually came walking up our front steps and pecked at our front door. And, you know, we took video and we were all amazed. And as time went on and he stayed, we were amazed that, you know, he was going to stay with us for a while. And even through the fireworks and the snow and the weather and stuff, I mean, they have managed on their own to stay in the area and live good. So we don't want to bother all the neighbors who don't, I shouldn't say all the neighbors, but the neighbors who don't want to be bothered with the noise. So we did take steps to try to mitigate that. And I think that that in the last week especially has helped. We put out a radio so that it gives them different noises and so that they're not alerted and call. And we found that one of the males was actually, he was roosting in the tree right next to a neighbor's window, which we were unaware of because I normally go to bed pretty early. So at night we started shooing them away from that tree so that they would go to a further tree away. And I think that's helped too. So I just wanted to, like I said, let you guys know. And any of you honestly are welcome if you want to actually come and see, you know, the habitat in which they're living. It's a portion of my backyard. They don't stay there all the time, but we kind of call it the back 40 because it's an area where the previous owner had set up a gazebo in a little garden area for a wedding. And after the wedding, it just went unmaintained. And when we bought the property, we just have had other projects to get to. And so that's probably been on the back burner. But, you know, you're welcome to come and see and take a look. And it's been amazing to see people on tally trail who are caught off guard and ooh and ah and get their phones out and take pictures. And some of the neighbor kids will, you know, come down just to watch. And so it's been an enhancement for most of the neighborhood. And most people feel that, you know, especially during COVID when we were locked down, it was a bright spot. So we just ask for your consideration and hope that you can come to a good resolution that makes everybody happy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other peacock? Okay. Before we go, I was going to ask Jennifer, if, do you feel like our current ordinances has a void in this topic or?
I don't necessarily want to give away my legal arguments from the prosecution standpoint of this, so I'm not going to elaborate on that a whole lot. But because I do come on this issue from two perspectives for you all. I'm your city prosecutor and I'm charged with enforcing your ordinances as they're written and bringing any issues to you that I think are out there. But I also come to you as your city attorney and would rewrite or help you rewrite an ordinance if it needed to do that. What I think is the biggest issue here is that your law enforcement is who is charged with enforcing this on the streets. And so they're going to continue to try and attempt to do that. And they're either going to, they're going to have to make one of two assumptions. The first assumption is they're going to have to assume that Mrs. Porter is the owner, as they have done, and provide citations to her under this. Or the flip side of that, they're going to have to make the assumption that these are totally wild and there is no ownership or no reason to leave them in the area if they're causing a problem. And then they're going to do as the ordinance says and they're going to trap them and remove them. And so I think that it does leave your law enforcement in a place that they are or could be in conflict with citizens as this has risen to this issue. So I do think it's something for the commission to think about and consider. And these cases that are pending that Mrs. Douglas referenced are going to be moving through court fairly quickly. This started in April and so those cases will be coming up and they will need to be resolved. And I can obviously resolve them with prosecutorial discretion. However, my job is to enforce what you all have in place, so.
Okay. Well, then I guess that kind of leaves it to the commission. Is this somebody we want to take up? And I think we'll have to probably expedite it so it makes sure we get it on probably next. Is this something looking at an ordinance like that's presented here?
I guess, you know, I'd like to see our current ordinance to see if this is, because I'm assuming this is written by, okay.
Mr.
Lucille Douglas, yeah. And I've not seen, I didn't get a chance to look at our current, unless it was in the, is that the one that was in the packet?
Yes, that was included. 1032 and 1033 are the ordinances that are applicable to this particular situation. What Mrs. Douglas has provided to you is something that her and her client worked on. The discussion that Danielle and I had with Ms. Douglas and her client was that if you're asking the commission for something, the best way to do that is to provide for policy change, not arguments on, you know, the criminal case or anything like that. But what is the policy that you're asking us to consider? And so that's why she drafted this for you. And staff just provided what's on the, you know, what has happened currently, the timeline, our current ordinance and the other information we had relevant to this.
And this is specifically for feral exotic fowl?
Correct.
Well, I feel unless there's a reason that we don't think it meets the warrant, I think probably it is something that probably staff should probably spend some time on, get some of it repaired so we can formally address this. But just because I do think like Jennifer saying, there's a little bit of a gap where the police have to enforce something that could be not as clear as possible. So at least if we bring it up and it's a formal item, that's something we can discuss and kind of work through that. Obviously, we're just in public comments or not actually doing any motions here or anything. We're just kind of seeing if this is something that the commission wants to kind of bring forward.
Well, it sounds like something that there is a gap in the ordinances and we need to address it, it sounds like. So I agree with you on having staff and our legal counsel put something together for us to look at.
I mean, I don't want to see the law enforcement be put in where there's a question of what needs to happen and what has to happen, so.
Well, and it's a gray line. And I think if it's impacting one neighborhood or one area, that chances are it is in others too, so.
Okay. So I think that's, is that good math? So that's got direction on that?
Yeah. If I could have a copy of what was provided, I'd be great.
Get this and I'll give the other one from.
You got an extra one?
Oh, there you go. All right, more public comment.
All right, Nathan Heck, pastor at the Nazarene Church here in Garden City. Just come to you, some of my history from the church I was at previously. We had put, as part of our renovation process there and to be using God's funds wisely, we actually put solar panels on that building. And it was a tremendous blessing once it got installed and it really was 100% offset for the church. Allowed us to do some other things for the community that we're with that dollars that came in. When I got here to Garden City, I started looking into it and looking into the regulations and all the things that go along with that here. I realized that there was quite a limit on how much solar panels you can put on a building and within the current codes. And so I was looking at, sit on a couple of different advisory boards as well and hearing some of the arguments on the need for power and the lack of power we've had in the last couple of years. And I was looking at with their increasing growth here in Garden City, we're going to need more power resources as well. And so as we continue to provide for electric vehicles in the future and a lot of studies have been done on, you know, when electric vehicle stations go in, the draw on the grid will be tremendous. And so thinking about just for our future growth as a community as well, as we would reconsider those statutes and those restrictions on how much you can put on a building so that it would provide additional power to the grid in our community. If nothing else, maybe make an exemption for nonprofits and businesses. I know in the new development that's going in on Third Street, some of those are required to have solar panels on them as part of the development. And so looking, just some way to make it better for our entire community as well as the church as well. So just ask that you consider looking into that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you. Thank you, everybody who came up and spoke during public comment. That's high score for the year, maybe.
Pretty close.
With that, we're ready for item 7A. That's a staff report on the sales tax year-to-date. Item B is a required update from Toxic Communications as it relates to our franchise agreement. I would add that was able to participate last week in the Kansas Infrastructure Hub. This is a gathering of multidisciplinary, elected and appointed officials, private sector folks. Just again, multidisciplinary that can help guide how the state may allocate resources that are coming to it of, in particular, the bill funding that's headed Kansas's way. So I'll try to keep the commission up to speed on details as they progress. There is a conference later in the, later in the month. I know we have staff participating in it. I'll participate in it as well. And so we'll keep our eyes on how Kansas is using those funds and the various areas of focus. A short list of meetings of note.
I did want, there's a correction that needs to be made. The chamber's breakfast is on the 20th and not the 21st.
Thank you. I think with that, we're ready for item 9A. It's the appropriation ordinance and if approved, it would be ordinance number 2558-2022A.
I move to approve appropriation ordinance number 2558-2022A.
Second.
Right, there's a motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Item 10A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an environmental nuisance resolution. If approved, it would be resolution 2927-2022. And I think John is going to present this.
Good afternoon. The governing body of the city of Garden City has declared it unlawful for any person to maintain nuisance conditions on private property within the city of Garden City. It has been determined that the residence located at 1001 Long Boulevard has an environmental nuisance condition on the property and is in violation of the city's environmental codes. There is a pile of sand located on the property that continues blowing onto the neighboring properties. Staff has visited the property on many occasions but has been unable to reach the residents and/or owners. The property owner and the residents have been notified by two letters sent on June 14th and June 27th and has also tried contacting the property owner by phone call and was unable to make contact according to, to make contact. According to section 38-137 of the Environmental Code of Ordinances and have neither abated the nuisance conditions nor requested a hearing before the governing body. Attached resolution will allow staff to mitigate the environmental nuisance on this property. The two alternatives are the governing body may approve the attached resolution or the governing body may not approve attached resolution. And staff recommends alternative one.
Any questions?
I'll entertain a motion. We approve resolution 2927-2022.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion about this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a draft of the 2023 city budget so that the indication of revenue neutral rate intent can be authorized to be signed by the mayor. Jared.
Good afternoon. I'm here, I'm going to not read this entire item to you. I'll kind of hit some highlights and read some parts.
There's a lot of well-written, yeah.
But the city commission has concluded its review of the 2023 city manager's proposed budget. The following changes made since the last discussion on June 21st, 2022, are listed below and are currently incorporated in the 2023 mill levy calculation. Those first four bullet points have to do with the payment for the settlement in case 18CV72. So that's an adjustment made after the approval of that settlement. So that's 2022 as well as 2023 impacted on the budget. The fifth bullet point is $1,130,000 in the electric fund that is cost for the finalization of the material asset purchase agreement, which was not initially included in the budget that was presented. And then there's four bullet points that cover revisions that were made to use tax, city sales tax and county sales tax for 2022 or 2023. The use tax for 2023 was adjusted by a decrease of $26,500 based on the current trend year-to-date. And the others for 2023 approved number were adjusted based off our 2022 trends we're seeing. Those adjustments to use and sales tax amount to a total increase of $293,500 in revenues between the 2022 and 23 budget. At the meeting on June 21st, multiple scenarios were presented to the commission related to the potential mill levy rates and funding scenarios to achieve those rates. The commission expressed interest in a flat mill levy or a decreased mill levy from 2022. Staff has prepared five mill levy scenarios and the associated dollar impact on the current budget needed to achieve each scenario. So here you have 38.512, which would be a flat mill levy over this year. And we would need to make adjustments in the budget for either increased revenues or decreased expenses of $477,800 to accomplish that mill levy. The others listed and the correlating dollar amounts seem to be adjusted are presented as well. And bullet point five would be the revenue neutral rate. Scenario one, two and three and four would result in a mill levy which exceeds the revenue neutral rate of the 34.486. As discussed at the previous meeting, the plan would be to utilize the ARPA funds we have available to subsidize lost revenue, offsetting the needed funds to achieve any of those mill levies that the commission decided to use as its goal or its established mill levy for this next year. However, if the commission elected to not utilize the ARPA funds for the full amount necessary to achieve the desired mill levy rate, they could provide direction to staff to make any changes in the budget as it has been presented. The following assumptions are incorporated into the budget as presented and would be available to be adjusted at the commissioner's discretion. You have a list of not everything from the budget, but a fairly decent view of kind of those fluctuating numbers or numbers that may have increased this year due to a certain request that are different than somewhat of the norm. So any of these items presented today that are these numbers you'd like to discuss or have questions on, I'd be happy to answer. I will draw your attention to bullet point one. In all funds with personnel, the salary line has been established as a 2% salary pool for the year. 1% of this increase is related to a pay plan adjustment, which goes, would go into effect January 1st to adjust for increases due to the cost of living and to maintain competitiveness in our pay plan. The other 1% of the increase is related to the annual step increase that coincides with each employee's annual performance evaluation occurring on the employee's anniversary date. This step increase represents an approximate 2% increase at the time of that occurrence. Heading into 2022, an additional 1% was included in the salary pool calculations to increase the January 1st adjustment of the pay plan from 1% to 2% to be more reflective of increases in cost of living. If the commission anticipates a pay plan adjustment greater than 1% heading into 2023, an additional 1% increase would represent a cost of $195,138 across the taxing funds. So if we were to make adjustments like we did last year, that would be kind of the target number to do so. Any of the other items that we have to answer questions about? The scope today, for this, from this point, the city commission has the ability to make any adjustments to the 2023 budget before publication of the 2023 budget hearing notice. The notice is scheduled to be presented to the commission at the August 2nd meeting and will be published thereafter. So we have that window to still make changes and adaptations. However, this time, a decision needs to be made regarding the city's intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate. The city's requirement is to indicate whether or not the city intends to exceed the revenue neutral rate. The city is also asked to include an anticipated mill levy rate, which will be included on the publication sent to residents by the county. The final mill levy adopted by the city and published for the budget hearing can differ from the mill levy rate included on the publication. However, it is the city's goal to provide an accurate estimation of the anticipated mill levy rate at this time. So your alternatives today are to authorize the mayor to sign the indication of revenue neutral rate intent, stating the city intends to exceed the revenue neutral rate and identify a mill levy rate from scenario one, two, three or four presented as the rate to be included on the publication sent to citizens. Two, authorize the mayor to sign the indication of revenue neutral rate intent, stating the city intends to exceed the revenue neutral rate and identify a mill levy rate different than those presented in scenarios one, two, three or four as the rate to be included on the publication sent to citizens. Or three, authorize the mayor to sign the indication of revenue neutral rate intent, stating the city does not intend to exceed the revenue neutral rate and indicate the revenue neutral rate or some other rate lower than the revenue rate to be included on the publication sent to citizens. Staff's recommendation is alternative one. I'm happy to answer any questions or provide any feedback needed.
So I have a question. So if we publish, like, say we keep the rate flat, does that go out to all of the residents of Garden City, letting them know what the revenue rate or is it only because we're exceeding the revenue neutral rate? That's I'm not sure. Or is it only if you?
So if we're planning to exceed the revenue rate, then it, that would be published and sent out to citizens indicating that we do intend to exceed that revenue rate and what our proposed or our projected mill levy rate would be. There is no restriction to that. Once you set that, you can put the publication that our mill levy rate is seven times what we anticipate. And then we come back and your actual budget hearing presentation have a mill levy rate that's different than that. But we want to be as transparent as possible, be as close to possible as what we anticipate our final mill levy rate to be. So that that publication will be match or very, very close to what our end, end mill levy rate ends up being.
So does that publication include, like, the trend of the mill levy over the last several years? Or can it include that trend? Or is it something that you just have to focus on?
So we provide, the information we provide to the county is whether we intend to, to exceed that rate and our proposed rate. The county compiles that information along with any other jurisdiction which intends to exceed their revenue rate and presents all of that information together on one publication intended to be a one-page, clear-cut, simple, concise. Here's the jurisdictions that intend to exceed, here's what the revenue rate would be and here's what their proposal is, is at this time. So that citizens are aware of what, which jurisdictions intend to exceed the revenue rate. So we don't necessarily control what that publication looks like. We just provide the information to the county who will then be directing that out to the public.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
And the revenue neutral rate is set how? Or is come up, how is that determined?
The revenue neutral rate is established by taking the, the dollar value of what the city's tax levy was last year and incorporating what that same dollar value would be based on our evaluation this year, what that mill levy rate would be to accomplish that same dollar value. So based on our, our fluctuated, our changed valuation, what, how many mills would it take to get the exact same dollar value as last year's appropriation of what we, what we levied?
So for example, in any community that's growing, would you usually be having to, even if the mill, the actual number is level, you would be always saying that you're exceeding the revenue neutral rate just because the city itself is growing, there's more businesses and so forth?
Right.
Right?
If, if our valuation increased and our valuation this year is higher than last year's and we plan to levy the exact same dollar value, we would use that revenue rate. But if you intend to exceed that by even a dollar, that you think your costs this year are a dollar more than last year and you need a dollar more and your valuation went up, you're going to end up exceeding that revenue rate.
So it's not necessarily the mill, that, I mean, obviously it's not the mill because we're talking about keeping it flat or, or some other scenarios of decrease. But it's just how much is that mill worth?
Well, so, so knowing the ARPA funds are not guaranteed funds, are kind of a one-time only funds. Are there any, so thinking about these, I was looking at the addition of a lot of the new positions. So knowing the ARPA funds will not be there next year, is that, are we kicking, you know, that issue down the, down the road? Or are we making sure that we're able to cover if we, if these new authorized positions are added? Will we have any problems? Is it gonna have to deal? Is it something we need to think about now with the ARPA funds, knowing that we could use those on a one-time basis? But then going into the following year's budget, is that gonna impact that?
I think when you look at the grand scope of the entire budget, if we had a lot of very large ongoing costs that were above and beyond what we could anticipate revenues increasingly to accommodate, it'd be more concerning. We have, along with the list provided, there are some one-time large costs that we could cut out of our budget to accommodate this, even if we didn't have the ARPA funds available for this year. I feel very confident that we could have accommodated a budget that had zero ARPA money available and still accomplished most of what we want to do, including those authorized positions we're, we're adding for this, this year and going forward. Some of those, I'll highlight, the, the fire department positions are gonna be included and ongoing. There's a few more being added in the future years due to that third fire station. So those are, those are some that you can't really plan to cut out if we're going forward with the project as is anyway. Whenever we add new positions, we do an analytical dive into what it's gonna cost and what are the pros and cons and gains. So those positions are vetted before we decide to, to add them to our, our authorized count.
Yeah, I understand the fire in the airport, and that's the two ones I was concerned about. Knowing that the fire station is going to be built and the airport's already underway, so.
Right.
Any other questions for Jared?
This was really well put together, so I just want to compliment you on that.
Thank you. So I think at this time, the, what I'd be asking would be a, a selection of which mill levy the commission feels comfortable would like to put as our publication, publicate, published. Mill levy for the publication that will be going out. Within that, the dollar value that we need to adjust to get there, I would also appreciate feedback from the commission, whether the intent would be in, to use ARPA funds to cover that or if there's any items on this list that the commission feels strongly one way or another, they would like to adjust as we incorporate a, a plan of a, attack to accommodate, accomplishing the mill levy that's selected.
Yes. I'll, I'll start, I guess. I would like to keep, as, from our previous discussion, we, we talked about a commission of keeping it flat or in our, in our city commission goals is to reduce the taxes. So either, I would pick either one or two. Me, I'm looking through, you know, the other, this list. I always kind of hearken back to the social funding and trying to keep it flat or reduce that in an area because as a commission, we do waive a lot of fees. And, you know, from last year, we had an issue with social funding and then with, with the thought process of rolling over or supposedly holding or rolling over those funds. I just see that becoming an issue with that fund. I mean, I, I, I understand what their thought process was, but I'd hate to have that as an ongoing issue with, with that fund.
Okay. Yeah.
And I, just, you know, and I, I, I understand from probably the other aspects of the other agencies or organizations, you know, of the increases just because everything else is increasing and just a, I just had a, did have a question on the Humane Society on, on their increase for this coming year. Is that just because of the expansion of the facility itself or is it just ongoing expenses?
I would say it's probably a more accurate reflection of what it takes to operate.
Just operate, okay.
Society. They were flying a little bit blind early on when the original agreement was made. They did show us their expenses.
Okay.
It was a pretty open book and I think, I think it's a fair request. Our interest was a longer-than-annual term and while we understood kind of allowing for some growth in that expense over time, kind of limiting the growth of that to a smaller percentage amount. So the agreed-upon was to give to the two commissions or, to give to this commission for consideration, but then sort of tacitly because of our inter-local agreement with Fannie County proposing, hey, if you want this ran by a third party, this is the cost.
Okay.
We can have some certainty of what the price is gonna be over the next three years under this new agreement. Or we can elect to get back in the business ourselves.
Okay.
And this would be, this would likely be reflective of what it would cost us and probably providing less of a service from the perspective of folks who normally interact with the Humane Society, where ours is a little bit more of a collection of animals and, and, and less about the, the adoption side of it.
Okay, thank you.
I know I lean between one and two also. I know we talked about leaving it flat, but I wouldn't be opposed to, just a slight decrease of a quarter percent would be great as well. I guess it's not a quarter percent, it's point two-five, whatever that, you know, if it's percent sir. I, you know, I don't do math in my head for that reason. And I, but I also know that those ARPA funds, it's just nice to have that cash. And so if you can steer away from using all of that, just to kind of have a little bit later on down the road because you really don't know what could come up. And so, so one or two would be probably where I would feel the most comfortable.
Yeah, I agree. I, you know, I, I would, I mean, definitely if we, if we can't do anything other than keep it flat, that's great. I would love, I would appreciate seeing a slight decrease, knowing that other costs have definitely increased. I mean, I know that there's some of the things, I know like the seven hundred and forty thousand that we're doing toward the streets. I mean, you know, we've, we've moved that forward and, and, you know, I, I don't want us to get off that cycle of taking care of our streets and roads because I know they're expensive and they're so needed. And I mean, that was a, it was a big figure, but I mean, the understanding, you know, that that was necessary. And a lot of these things, you know, I, they're just things, as, as far as the city. Unlike Commissioner, Commissioner Sessner, with the art, art grant funding, I'd like to keep it just a level funding, just always. I mean, and then make sure they use it every year. Because if that's there and it's valuable, then let's use it. Because there are people that definitely can use those dollars. And then if it's a, I mean, our social media does such an excellent job. I, I can't imagine that there's people who don't know about that, the funding. But I don't, you know, again, I, I think that being moderately, at a, at a moderate amount rather than increasing it and all of those kind of things. Knowing that we have the Western Kansas Green Foundation, there's a lot of other opportunities for grants. So, I mean, I'm with Commissioner Sessner, really keeping that level and let's not roll over or see increasing funds in that. But instead, use it as an opportunity for maybe people who've never had the opportunity to do that. And I know that, I'm excited about some of the things that we're doing as a commission on the municipal, the municipal building, court building, you know, with that. So I think there are special projects like that. But otherwise, I, this was really well done and I, again, I think either one or two would be my options.
Alright, well, I'm not gonna say anything that everybody else hasn't said. I think, I think going with one now and knowing that we're not really setting the mill, we're just saying what our intentions are.
That's right.
I do feel like we're gonna probably end up with a, a potential for a decrease as well in the future. But I was just, if we have to pick one, one is a good place to start and we can go down from there.
Right, because we can always change it.
Yep.
Well, up to a certain point.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, definitely.
I would move that we stay with option one, the flat thirty-eight point five-one-two mill levy using four hundred and seventy-seven thousand eight hundred dollars of the current ARPA funds.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Do we need to specify that you're authorizing the mayor to sign the indication of revenue neutral rate in this motion?
Yeah, authorizing, so I'll admit my emotion, authorizing the mayor to sign the revenue neutral rate.
I'll second to that.
Alright, we have a, a motion and a second. And this is to authorize the mayor to sign the indication of revenue neutral rate intent, stating that the city intends to exceed the revenue neutral rate and identify a mill rate, levy rate, which is a flat mill rate of thirty-eight point one-five-two. We talked about the ARPA funding being part of that offsetting. Any other discussion on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Thank you, Jared.
Thank you.
Thank you, good job.
Item twelve B, the governing body is asked to consider adjustments to commissioner pay due to current potential health insurance deductions exceeding the total annual pay for commissioners of five thousand four seventy. Jared.
You know, what I saw is the only items on the agenda. It was a little daunting, I'll tell you.
Yeah, really.
In September two thousand nineteen, the city adopted ordinance twenty-eight fifty dash twenty-nineteen, which adjusted commissioners' pay for the first time since two thousand six. Compensation for commissioners other than the mayor was set at fifty, five thousand two hundred dollars annually, which remained the same from the amount set in two thousand six. Compensation for the mayor was set at eight thousand dollars annually, which was an increase from the amount set in two thousand six. Annual adjustments are made each year based on the salary pool utilized in preparation of that year's budget. For budget year two thousand twenty-two, commissioners are paid two hundred and ten dollars forty cents per pay period or five thousand four hundred and seventy dollars annually. The mayor is paid three hundred and twenty-three, twenty per pay period or eight thousand four hundred and three annually. Commissioners have the option to participate in the city's health insurance plan and are provided the same rates as city employees. In reviewing the twenty-twenty-two employee cost per pay period, it was discovered that if a commissioner elected to utilize the family rate for health insurance with the lowest deductible plan the city provides while participating in the wellness plan of the city, the cost would exceed their bi-weekly pay. The cost per pay period for the twenty-twenty-two health insurance rates are included in the table below. If a commissioner elected to utilize the family rate of health insurance at this time, their total salary per pay period would not sufficiently cover the cost of the deduction. The city would calculate the total amount deducted at year-end and the commissioner would need to pay the city the remainder of the balance due for their health insurance costs. A comparison of the annual play, pay for commissioners and mayors of other cities of the first class in Kansas, which was compiled by the League of Kansas Municipalities as provided in the table below, also included are whether the commissioners and mayor have the option of participating in the city's health insurance plan. If the pay for commissioners were increased, the full deduction for any health insurance plan could be deducted from their bi-weekly pay without needing the commissioner to pay the city the remaining balance at the end of the year. Health insurance costs are anticipated to continue to rise, so even if an adjustment is made, the same issue may occur in future years. If commissioners' pay was increased to seven thousand dollars per year and continued to be adjusted by an annual, by an annual increase equal to the salary pool adjustment when preparing the annual budget, it is estimated the same concern could occur within five to ten years due to the increasing health insurance costs anticipated. If an adjustment is to be made to the pay rate for commissioners or the mayor, an ordinance would need to be prepared, which would repeal and replace ordinance number twenty-eight fifty dash twenty-nineteen. The alternatives are to direct staff to prepare options for commissioner salary increases to be presented at a future meeting, direct staff to prepare an ordinance to adjust commissioner salaries at an amount determined by the commission, or direct staff to continue current practices for any commissioner electing an insurance rate with costs exceeding annual pay. Staff has no recommendation this time. From a fiscal note, if a commission, if a commissioner pay were increased to seven thousand annually for twenty-twenty-three, the approximate impact would be an additional six thousand three hundred dollars in salary and benefit expenses beyond what is currently budgeted in the twenty-twenty-three budget. I'd be open to any questions. The seven thousand I'll highlight was kind of an arbitrary number just to paint a picture. But this, this main discussion is if the commission has an interest in adjusting those rates to not have the cost of the health insurance plan, if, if a commissioner were to choose that plan, be greater than the, the pay that they'd be receiving.
I mean, I think that it's a fair ask. I mean, I'm one that wants to make sure that running for a public office is something that's feasible for everybody. And I think that we need to keep that in mind, that for those where this might be something that, you know, could be of a benefit to them, that it might actually be what kind of puts somebody over the line to want to actually apply and run for an elected position. So I'd be in favor of it.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's, I mean, I appreciate the, the showing with, with other communities. And I mean, I think, you know, this idea of giving that an option, I think it's great that there is an option. So I think that that's generous already of the city. But I do, I do think that, you know, having the opportunity to at least be able to afford that. I mean, I, I really, I really appreciate, like I said, the, knowing that as, that's not the reason that you run for office is to pay here, and I don't want that to ever be the focus. But it is a, it is something that's nice to have as an opportunity for commissioners, especially knowing that health increase, our costs are gonna increase over, over time. So I would be in favor of that also. Now, the seven thousand dollars, I don't know that that's the figure, but I, I would like to see what you, you know, what that would look like, so.
I move to direct staff to prepare options for commissioner salary increases to be presented at a future meeting.
Second.
Alright, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Okay, well.
And I take it as alternative one?
Is it, right? But is it the seven thousand that we're looking at or?
I think that was.
I mean, is that just a?
I think this is just.
So if, if you direct staff, we'd come back with multiple scenarios like we've done on the other items that I presented.
Okay.
And let that kind of be a gauge for commission to, to dictate what route they'd like to go. Today, really just intent of, is this something you would like us to consider?
Oh, okay.
Or can I present to you or, or is it something you're not interested in?
Okay, well, because when I kind of read through that, I saw the seven thousand, I assumed that was kind of what we.
It was a target number, just to present kind of what its financial impact would look like if we were to increase that. And you can kind of do the quick math in your head to, if we increase that a month beyond, what would it look like?
I get it, yeah. No, I'm, I'm fine with that. I just, I was, the numbers were starting to blur together and I saw it. From the five thousand or the fifty-four hundred where we were at. And, you know, I, I know there was discussion, it's like, well, you guys get compensated, but if you actually do the math and, you know, round everything out, everything that we do, it's, you know, we get paid like a dollar an hour or something like that, so. So, yeah, I'm fine.
Okay, so we were talking about an alternative one. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Jared.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jared. Okay, item C is gonna be a big time saver. The appropriate motion would be to approve item C one. If you want to take it off and talk about it separately, we can do that too.
I move to approve consent agenda item C one.
Second.
Alright, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Alright, leave her at the commissioner reports then. So unless there's anything else, Matt?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Oiler.
Alright, very nice pre-meeting, Erin. Thanks for putting all of that together and presenting a really nice plan for what Southeast Park could look like. I think that it was well thought out.
well thought out and, and I was really excited to see all of the community participation that went into that. I mean, just knowing that you had those kind of numbers is great, so thank you for doing that. I enjoyed being in the Vets for Veterans Parade yesterday with the mayor and had a really good time. It was nice to see people come to that and, and just celebrate Independence Day and the Fourth of July. And so it was, it was a lot of fun to be in that. I had a chance to attend an event last week, last week called United We, which is women empowerment. And I was a moderator for that and having an opportunity to visit with other women and, and Commissioner Cessna was there on behalf of the league. But to be able to visit and talk to other women and get their feedback as to, you know, what some of those barriers are for career and what some of those barriers are for just, you know, being parents and, and working and, and college. And, and so it was really, it was really eye-opening. There were a lot of different things that were talked about, things I had no idea that, that went on. And so for me, it was, it was just very valuable to be a part of that. Stuff the Bus Collection is this weekend, so you'll see the buses around town, please. If you're so inclined, help us out with that. And then on Friday, there is a nonprofit fair that's going to be at Stevens Park. This is a great opportunity to see all, well, not all of them, but a pretty good number of nonprofits in town and find out what their services are and get to know a little bit about that part of the community. Enjoyed the Echelon Front training, leadership training with the city. I thought it was nice that we were all, I mean, even though we were in separate groups and stuff, it was nice to just, as a city and as an employer, to, to be able to be on that same level with everybody else. And I just really enjoyed that part of it. And I just have a quick question, really, it's kind of for Stuart, but the mural, do you know, do you have any idea or information on when that process might start? The one, I'm talking about the one in the municipal court building?
Come on out. I don't have an exact date on when that's going to start, but pretty much as soon as Michael's ready to get started with painting.
Okay. Because I know like one of the issues that they had last year was he wants students to be involved and school will be starting here in the next month and a half, so.
I can reach out to him and get you a more solid date on that.
All right, I appreciate that. Thank you.
No problem.
That's all I got.
All right. Commissioner Erner?
So why don't I say thank you first to all the first responders. I know that this last weekend, and I know we have one more night, where the, where the fire department, the police department and EMS have done just excellent. I know this has been a really busy weekend and I know they've over, done over and above what they've been, what they've been called and asked to do. And so I just want to say thank you to them. Also, thank you to all of those, the residents who are, I mean, when the 11 o'clock comes, I mean, it really dies down really quickly. Now, I've tried to go to bed earlier, but unfortunately I'm, I'm not sleeping as deeply yet. But I just really appreciate the responsibility of our community and, you know, knowing that these celebrations are important to them and also important to many others. And there have been so many great events and things to do in and around Garden City. There is, if you, if you have not found something that's really neat to do in Garden City, then make sure you look at, there's all, not only our website, but there's many websites. I had some family who came in and went to Garden Rapids at the Big Pool, I almost said the Big Pool, and I didn't mean, wasn't going to mean to, but the staff were excellent. They really did a great job. I mean, the concession area, the pool overall, it, so many people were having fun and, you know, it, you felt like you had plenty of room. And they kept asking, so is it saving lots of money? And it is. And I know that Fred Jones talked about and Erin has talked about the savings, not only in water, but just, just the fun is still continuing. And so it's a great amenity to have in our community. The last thing I want to say is I really enjoy our, our pre-meetings. And I, some people don't realize that these are open to the public. A lot of people think, well, that's just for commissioners. But pre-meetings are really open to the public and you find out so much great information in those pre-meetings, just of the things that are happening, the things that the city are, are interested in. So I just want to make sure and make that in public invitation that pre-meetings are open and that they really have some really great presentations. There was one in water recently, there was one this time in Southeast Community Park, which is very exciting. I hope we can find the dollars to do the, to the event pavilion earlier than later. But, you know, there's somewhere really good things happening. And I just want to make sure that you know that you are invited and we would love to see you there. And that's all I have.
All right, Commissioner Cessna?
Well, Commissioner Euler took most of what I was going to say. I, I did tend.
I might have left you one or two things.
Yeah, I did tend the United We as a representative for the League of Kansas Municipalities. There was a lot of good discussion there on, on a number of topics focusing on women. I was a little outnumbered at that, at that event, but, but very good discussion, not only from ladies from our community, but from surrounding communities that came to attend the event. Talking about the park, which was a very good pre-meeting. And then Commissioner Erner talked about the Garden Rapids at the Big Pool. But in the Kansas Government Journal, there's a nice article about everyone reaps the rewards of robust public parks and recreation. There's a nice article about Garden Rapids at the Big Pool in, in here and talking about how it has re-energized the Big Pool area, but also has saved us water and money as well. So nice article and showcasing Garden Rapids at the Big Pool. I also did attend the Echelon Training, which was very eye-opening. It was an interesting participation event. But I think it'll help our organization as a whole from top to bottom move forward in a positive direction, really getting our employees to look at the bigger picture and work closer as a team. And I think it was a good start this, this, the three events that they had during those three days to get, to get all staff kind of on the same level, so. And then one last thing, we did have some friends stop by and visit us that haven't been in the community for probably, I would say, 10 years. And they were just really amazed at the growth in the community and how nice the community really is. But especially down Main Street, when we took them down Main Street with the flags and the banners and everything, and then took them down Eighth Street.
Oh, that's great.
And they were just shocked at how that has been enhanced. And again, it kind of does look like Main, because they were saying it looks like Main Street. And I'm like, well, that was kind of the point. But they were just, you know, people that haven't been here for a while and just were, again, really amazed and shocked at how our community's growing and all the great things that we're doing. So yay, Garden City.
That's great.
And that's all I've got.
Yeah, good, good pre-meeting and talking about Southeast Community Park. The thing I really like seeing is the participation, not just for the community, but specifically the kids in our community. They were the largest cohort of people who voted on those different things. And I think really when you get people that are users of a facility, being the ones that decide what happens, we saw that with Garden Rapids at the Big Pool. Or like with the, with the indoor shooting range, when those are the people who are deciding what things make the most difference to them, that's really when you, you know, you got a good project that's going to come out at the other end. So great to see, good progress on that. Same thing, I'm just, Echelon Front was a great training, well worth everybody's time. It was good to be there and, and a good time there. Also, just wanted to mention that it was the Veteran Veterans Parade. Good community turnout, I feel. Just a, just a nice show of, of pride for our community and our country and our veterans. So that was a very good. And then last thing, because I have to think of something nobody else has said. The, and I'm not, I, I know it's police, but I don't know who else is involved with, with this, but the traffic control for getting home from the fireworks yesterday was really good. Like I got out, in and out, we were down by the fairgrounds. We got in and out, it was almost no time. I was on my way home, I'm like, man, that was really good, that was really smooth. Got home, my wife was in a different car. She pulled up and first thing she said out the door is like, they did really good. I'm like, well, should let them know. So good job whoever is in charge of, of that. I know, I know I definitely saw police, but if there's other people that are involved with that traffic control for events like that, went really well this time. So good job on that front. So with that, I think we are done. Thank you.
Thank you.